So does, do we not use the microphones then?
The microphone's gonna go through the chicanery.
Seriously.
And hello, welcome to the regular meeting. I apologize for that. Just as a heads up, the speakers in the room are not working, but the recording is working, so please use your microphones. Please continue to speak into the microphones for the people viewing at home. Okay, we can move to the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise? In a second. Kelly? Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? I don't see any. All in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Okay, we'll move to public comments. Is there anyone here to speak?
Good evening. It seems like just yesterday, the school board was lined up over at the high school and there was this guy with his back, to me, kinda chubby. I think he was wearing a motorcycle jacket. And you could tell by looking at the people that he was the next superintendent by reading their faces. I didn't even have to go in the room or ask. And I remember the old board was, had been working on the lunch program for a year. And Dr. Morris hired Mrs. Demers, and that was the end of the problem right then and there. The board never talked. At every meeting, they were talking about the lunch program. And that's the last time they talked about it for problems. I remember that the, one of the things that the new school board found, and as some of you may know, they replaced the entire school board in three elections. Nobody was reelected. The chair, I think, lost 2 to 1, 400 to 800 votes. So the first thing Dr. Morris did was fix the HVAC at the high school because they hadn't had that job properly supervised as requested by the administrator. And the system had never been commissioned and the preventive maintenance was about less than adequate. So that, according to people that seem to know what they're talking about, saved 100 and a quarter thousand a year. That's a teacher. That was the first thing he did. One of the first things he did, because that happened quickly. I remember the athletic field that they'd been working on for god knows how long at the high school. And I think that took two meetings to persuade people to get the votes necessary. I remember Madbury was a little cramped on lunch space, and so that, Miami got an addition. And things were going very nicely. And then we came to this building. And the reason that you have to get 60% for a bond instead of 2/3 is that none of the school districts could ever get 66%, so they had to drop it to 60, and then that was a struggle. We had one vote for a renovation of the high school that was 2/3 against. And this is a lesson for the school board. It was mostly because people didn't trust the school board to the dime. And so they did get that passed, but then it, they didn't have it properly supervised and Dr. Morris had to go in. Anyway, on this school, the process was a very good process. I won't go into it, but I don't know if there's another school that got 76% of the vote to build a $50 million school, another district. And so this is a major accomplishment. And the reason I say these things, I want to, I hope that you people are able to continue seriously. And the job that you do is not always something you want to do, it's something you have to do or need to do. The old school board, but didn't care about the lunch program, they hired a nutritionist and its food service. So I was trying to think of some other parallels, like, I'll give you an example. In Durham, on Bennett Road, they tried fixing a collapsed culvert three times by pouring gravel in the hole and paving it over. And that's just a, that's just a sinkhole waiting to happen. So you have to, in some cases, you're gonna have to actually find out what you're talking about, such as the fixing HVAC system at the high school. And remember, not only did he do that, he hired people that were experts and the whole HVAC system is computerized now. And that, that was the key. That was the state of the art. And he didn't have, as far as I know, he didn't have anybody on the, on the school board that even had a clue before the new people got voted in. So now, you're the new people. Matt, you got your car back?
I do. Can you just, very quickly, your name and where you live?
My god, they wrote it down. Did you lose it?
No, no, for the, for the record.
William Hall, Durham.
Thank you very much. Any other one else for a public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 1 regular meeting? Brian? In a second. Denise? Any changes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor.
Nice job, Karen.
Okay, district announcements. And just a reminder to speak into the microphone even though it's not.
Thank you. Rebecca Nowey, principal at Oyster River High School. So first, I wanted to share that we received a certificate of inclusion from the Special Olympics for our unified program. And also, I wanted to let you know, we are starting a unified EPW class next year. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I can pass that around. And we also received this week a certificate of appreciation from the United States Department of State for our exchange program. So for the last couple of years after COVID, we were able to have exchange students start to come back. So we've had kids from Ukraine, kids from Romania, kids from all over the world coming into Oyster River. And that's a huge thank you to our community and for the families that have those exchange students with them for an entire year. So I wanted to share that with you and that we were noticed for that and appreciated for that. And again, a huge appreciation for our families. That's a huge commitment. I know that they love to have the kids in their homes and the kids have a wonderful experience in America and at Oyster River High School. Some notes, I told you last time that I was here, I would tell you about Teacher Appreciation Week after, because I wanted to be a surprise for the teachers. But the first day of Teacher Appreciation Week, we actually gave garden seeds. And so last year was just flowers. We had some notes that they wanted more than flowers, maybe something different. And so we had flowers and vegetables this year, so teachers got to come down. Paris came down and the entire staff and got to pick from a basket and pick seeds they wanted to take home and plant or do something with their kids. On the second day, we had huge candy bars, and so they could choose from a plethora of candy bars, like a sweet treat on Tuesday. We had free omelet day on Wednesday. So Tim, on some Wednesdays in the school, will do omelet day. And so all the teachers who wanted to or all of the staff who wanted to got a free omelet that morning. Thursday, we had self-care pouches that we had in their mailboxes. And also the PTO, a huge thank you to them again for providing lunch that day. It was amazing. It was a huge taco bar. Teachers were very thrilled with that and really enjoyed it. And then on Friday, we provided snacks. And then we also had a raffle, so a lot of baskets. We let teachers know to come down. We did have AP testing, so we didn't do it over the intercom like we usually do. But we sent an email out and called the rooms so teachers could come down and pick out of the 23 baskets we had. And then we were able to get nine different gift cards also. And so teachers really enjoyed that. So just celebrating teachers and education staff all week long, and it was a lot of fun and I know that they really enjoyed it. I did send out the end of the year schedule, so that was in the last newsletter, and I will send that out every week, every Friday since, or coming up. And then also, if anything is added, what I'll do is highlight that in there. So if there won't be any changes, or if there is, it's just look for the highlight if you already have that posted. Final exam schedule was also in the last newsletter. I will also continue to send that out, too. Underclassmen awards are tomorrow night, so those begin at 6:30. And then all those invitations went out on Saturday. And so parents and students do know if they're receiving a reward, they just don't know which one. 5:24, on May 24th, we have the teacher workshop day, so no school for kids. And then Memorial Day is that next Monday, May 27th. And then the graduate, graduation information was also sent out in the newsletter, but I also sent a separate email to senior families and to seniors, so they would have that just easy to find. But I'll continue to do that each week, and if anything is updated in that information, I will also highlight that, so they can take a quick glance if they'd like to. And if nothing's highlighted, nothing changed, but I do want to continue to send it out so people have access to that. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
So I got to attend the orchestra concert last night, which was excellent. So I was happy. I unfortunately have missed a few here and there, and the one last night was wonderful. So congratulations to all the students.
Last third, well, the May 2nd, the Thursday two weeks ago, was the DEIJ Belonging Workshop. And I see, I know the other folks were there, Dr. Morris was there, and so was Heather and Denise, and so I'm not sure exactly how many people attended. About 40, something odd? And I thought it was very effective and I thought it was very good. I think one of the highlights to me was the fact that we did have some community members who were not directly associated with the school up here, and I thought their comments were valued and actually invaluable. And I'd actually love to see more of that, because one of the points of a workshop about belonging is the fact that we're a whole community, it's beyond actually just the school. So I thought it was very effective, and I'd like to see more people attend next time with something like that, because we're all in this together. It's not just the school, it's the whole community with us. So I thought it was very well done. So thank you too.
Thanks back up, Gianna. So I had said it, we did small table groups, and I got to sit at a table with two very senior women, one living across the street and one living at Riverwoods. And they were a hoot in that meeting. They, their observations were so pithy, and one was a retired attorney from New York City, and she made me laugh through the whole session, just super cool. So I agree with you, Gianna. If we can expand that network out, I think that our seniors have a lot to offer in these conversations.
So that was one of the things that I had, was just to say a big, a big thanks to Rachel and the DEIJ committee for putting together that. It was a super impactful community event. I loved the, the idea of the stories being shared initially as a panel, and then from there, that allowed all of the attendees to kind of expand on that and think about it from their own experiences and perspective in small group discussions. So it was really well organized and very, very thoughtful. So that was one thing. And then, I'm not sure if, I don't want to steal Maeve's, Maeve's thunder, but I did want to say a huge congrats to all the students who were honored by the National Press Association for the Mouth of the River Award. That was something that has come out recently. It was an overall publication award, as well as individual students being recognized for their contributions. So just congratulations to everybody there for all of their hard work for it.
Oops. We can move on to the assistant superintendent reports.
Good evening. Just a few announcements. I just wanted to remind everyone that we are very fortunate to have Mirko Chardin coming to Oyster River to talk about universal design for learning and equity in the classroom. And he is going to be joining us on the teacher workshop day. He will be speaking to the full faculty and then also to smaller, smaller groups of interested faculty members to learn more about UDL and equity in the classroom and in the school. So we're really excited to welcome him next week. I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow evening, prior to the underclassmen awards, we have an event here to celebrate Dr. Morris and his upcoming retirement. So I hope to see people there. And it starts at 4 o'clock, from 4 to 5, we'll have our reception, and then at 5 o'clock, we'll start our ceremony. So I hope to see people there. And I also wanted to let everybody know that as a district, we continue to take safety and student safety and faculty safety as a priority and something that we want to continue to learn about and to hone our practices and our policies. And so we participated in a reunification training all day today, and we did that at SAU 16. So I just want to thank SAU 16 for putting that on. And there were probably eight or nine, eight or nine school districts there from the area. So it was wonderful to have the opportunity to speak with other school districts and to learn together. And it also opens up the door for us to share our resources with each other as well if, god forbid, if anything ever happened in one of our schools' communities. So I just want to let everybody know that's something that we continue to train on. We had the administrative team from the SAU, and then we had principals, all the principals were there. And, and also Dr. Schaps joined us as well.
Can you just tell us what reunification is?
So reunification, we talked about crisis events, and if we had to evacuate a building, how do we bring families back together again after we've evacuated? And that's sort of reunification of, of families with students.
Can you repeat the presenter for UDL? I didn't get it written down.
Yeah, Mirko. So he, so I can, would you like for me to spell his name or, yes? Okay. M-I-R-K-O. And his last name is C-H-A-R-D-I-N. And he works through Novak, which is a consulting firm. And so if you're interested in learning more about him, I can, I can send you information, but you can also find him online. Great, thank you. I forgot, like, the star of the show.
Yes.
The kids. So I want to invite Jason and Jade up to talk about Vex Robotics, and I'm gonna let them introduce the program and the kids. And we're really excited to have them, because we had first come from the high school, and so now we get to learn about our middle school STEM program and middle school robotics. So I apologize profusely.
Good evening. So we just wanted to talk a little bit about, kind of share our success, another successful season we've had, middle school robotics this year. And I know there's many new members to this board, so kind of, I want to give you an overview about how the middle school robotics program at the, at, you know, has grown over the years. So John Severio, who's over there in the seats over there, Jade Terrill and myself, Jason Duff have been doing this for a little while. John and I, about 10 years ago, started robotics at the middle school. In 2017, 18 season, we switched to Vex Robotics, which is the current platform we use. We had four students. And, you know, we didn't really know much about the platform. Kids did very well and actually made it to the world championships that year. From there, it's been an exponential, like, increase every year. So this year, we ended our season with 94 students. We have roughly 20 competitive teams, or actually 20 teams, 16 of which compete competitively. We've become the team everywhere we go, either we compete in New Hampshire and Massachusetts during the regular season, where the team that, you know, they get disappointed when Oyster River shows up. Where the, they, they, you know, they hate us because they ate us, kind of thing. So it's a good thing for us. We have a reputation no matter where we go. We've become the key program in the region to build other programs. So starting last year during our, a year ago service palooza at the middle school, we were in a workshop with the students and coaches, and we brought other coaches from all around the state and taught them how to run a robotics program. Taught them, like, kids taught them how they approach a problem. We taught them how to organize their things, trying to get more and more kids doing robotics. As far as our success this year, throughout our events, we compete throughout the season. The end of our, well, in February, there's a regional, we call it the states, but it's New Hampshire and Vermont state competition combined together. They invite the top 40 elementary and middle school teams in all of New Hampshire and Vermont. Of the 40, we had 14 of them. So we had 35% of the teams at the event. At the event, for the, there's two main categories, team, teams work together. So the teamwork category, we've placed, we had eight teams in the top 10, including all six top spots. In the skills portion of the competition, we had 10 of the top 11. There were nine awards given at this competition, we were given eight of them. And from that, there were three middle school teams that were able to qualify for the world championships this year, which was a decrease from last year, but that's just a restructuring, not, nothing about our abilities. And we took all three of those spots. So all, all the representatives from all of New Hampshire and Vermont were Oyster River Middle School. The, so we went to Dallas, about, what, two weeks ago now? We competed for three days. These kids will tell you a little bit about it in a second. From teams all over the country, all over the world, including countries like Spain, China, Turkey, Burkina Faso, Canada, Australia, Taiwan, Mexico, and others. Our teams did very well, top 420 teams in the world there. We were right in the middle of the pack, which is a very respectable place to be. Never the worst team. I'm gonna open up to any of these guys. This is, we had, we brought 13, we have three teams that went, combined for a total of 13 students, including our, our actual, the excellence award winner team for all of New Hampshire and Vermont. The 2820W team is a team of all, of all girls. We were really pushing girls in engineering. And the excellence award winner is considered the best overall robotics team. It was an all, an all-girls team from our school, which was fantastic. All right. Who's up? Colin? All right, that's it.
Hello. My name is Colin Chu, and I am an eighth grader on Team 2820G on our robotics program. I moved to the school district two years ago at the start of seventh grade, and some of the first classmates I met and talked to were my robotics teammates. This really helped me adapt to the new environment when I first came to the middle school. During competitions and meets throughout the year, I interacted with countless people in the robotics community that I would never have known without robotics as a common denominator. Robotics enabled me to fit in with the school community and connect with numerous other robotics members throughout the state. I will definitely continue to pursue robotics in high school. And thank you so much for supporting this program.
Hello, my name is Devin Moray. I am an eighth grader at the middle school. I am in Team 2820D, and I've had a great time in robotics. I started off in sixth grade, non-competitive. I had a goal to do competitive for the next year, which I did. And the second year, I did competitive competitions, and my team made it all the way to states. Then, we set a goal for Worlds. The next year, this year, we made it to Worlds finally. It was a great opportunity to meet so many different teams from so many different places. I really enjoy robotics, and I'm looking forward to doing it in high school, too. I will want to pursue robotics in the future. And also, I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Severio. He's retiring this year from robotics. He's been a great teacher and an amazing guy. And then also to the robotics coaches, they've really helped us this year with everything. The PTO, Parent Teacher Association, for like, the banners and the swag at the competition. And then you guys, too, for all your support. Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Yuen Khan. I'm part of Team, I'm part of Team 820W, and I had a really nice time this year, and I thought it was very fun. I met a bunch of new people when I first started. See, last year was my first year at this school, and I honestly didn't know many people. I was very scared. And when I first went into robotics, I admit, I did not have a good impression on it at the start, but I didn't really have any friends at that time, so I was very surprised when my teammate Devon came over and dragged me into her team and had a really nice time. We went to Worlds that time. We were a bit of an underdogs then, so we literally barely made it. It was a huge stress on the team. I honestly did not have a good time at Dallas. I got sick the entire time, stayed in a hotel for four days. And just hope for the best next year. And this year, I feel like my team went off a much better start. And I feel very happy we got this far, and we made huge improvement to our notebooks. These are our two notebooks. I believe we finished this one. This is the first one.
I'll pass this around to C. So the students are off, they have an engineering log. And I'll spin this around, but, you know, they started last July. You know, their table of contents is about seven or eight pages long, all color-coded based on which part of the design process is in. This is world caliber. I have shared this with some family members that work for the Defense Department, and they've borrowed parts of it to share with their, because this is how teams are supposed to work.
You did?
Yes, I did. I actually didn't tell you that yet. But it was all anonymous, it's all, no, no personal information. But the, I'll pass around, look at this. This is, you know, high college level or above level engineering process. So feel free to look at those. Do you want to share that one, too?
Yeah, we didn't do much in this one, since we literally started right after states on this one. And I admit that, to be honest, some of my teammates worked a lot harder than some of the others. Some of them took charge, like Devon. I'm very proud of them.
There's a lot of teamwork lessons to be learned, obviously, in any group activity, and these students spend a ton of time together. So like, they, you know, we meet regularly three times a week since, from October to May. And if not more, then we compete on weekends. And pretty much, you know, the investment in the space we have in this building for the robotics room, that room is used every class period of the day from before school starts. This is the first thing all of these kids do, show up, because they bring their robots almost every single day. They bring them back in, and they start working on them till school starts. And any free period they have, they're back down there, and they go right to the end of the day, and we have to kick them out, when we want to go home at the end of the night. They're very dedicated. You know, we see before big events, they're working 20 hours a week probably on their robots, including doing school and doing well in school, which we're proud of. We should give a shout out to Braden Alvarez, he's the only robotics team we've ever had that's gone to Worlds three times. So that's quite impressive.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say that was a robotics injury.
No, he didn't, it wasn't that rough in Dallas. Wasn't that rough in Dallas. But no, he, but yeah, the only student ever, but we're very proud of the whole group. They did bring their robots. If people would like to see, they can come and kind of give a quick demonstration here while you're looking at those notebooks. And then I think Ms. Terrill has a couple of things to add. All right. You guys want to bring them up over here and kind of demonstrate what they do? All the robots have similarities, but dramatic differences. There's a lot of strategy to the game they were playing this year. They can talk better about it than I can.
I would even, for the cameras, back up a little closer to that square on the floor behind you. Yeah, that should be good.
I will say, these are all a little beat up from TSA. Okay, so they're, they've been having to clip them back together. It's hard to get, these do not fit in a overhead compartment easily, and you can't really check them either if you'd like them to get there. easily, and you can't really check them either if you'd like them to get there in one piece, so it's always a challenge. Big part of the game was, obviously, there was different sized blocks on the board that they have. Competitions at our events are only one minute long, so, and they have to use two drivers in that time period, so they, they have sorting devices, picking, being able to pick up multiple different sized shapes quickly and then deposit them in goals. They work together with another robot and combine scores together, and they're randomly assigned to work on a different robot, so.
This robot is sorting based on the size.
Can you pick up both at the same time? They can pick up, they can pick up the green and the purple at the same time, and then they can, how many, how many blocks can you guys hold?
Forty-five.
They can hold 45 blocks at a time.
Forty-five, green, white, and then eight purples.
Oh, sorry, 45 green blocks and eight purples. Our D-team's robot, other than going to Worlds, they were teamwork champion every event they competed in this year. All right, share the blocks with the other guys. All right. All right, you all go.
Okay, I'm not...
This, yeah, this robot is a very different design. They had a different, a lot of strategy to this, so they decided not to really focus on picking up purple blocks at all, and only did green, and were, they were, this team always our most consistent group, every single event, every match, very consistent. We started changing a battery, I guess, in one group.
My name is Jade Terrell, and I'm not looking forward to having to follow them up, because they did a really amazing job, but we wanted to just share a little bit about our, you know, the future forecast of the program. And this year, we roughly estimated that it costs us about $16,000 to run the program in the way that we did. Thanks to John, he did apply for a grant through the DOE, which we receive, which we've received for the last, I think it's four or five years, and we are guaranteed to have it again next year, which is $11,000. That covers things like registration fees for students, but also supplies with the program, with as many students as we have, you can imagine, we have to purchase quite a few supplies. Also, a lot of the financial support, as Devon had mentioned, came from, the PTO donated some money to us to help us get to Worlds, and we also have a tremendous amount of support from Rocky Coast Print Works. They help us with all of our shirts at a very discounted price, they also sponsor us at Worlds. And also, a lot of the high school robotics students will volunteer at our competitions that we host here, which we could not put on without their support. It's amazing to watch them, and also our middle school students perform at those competitions. The 16,000 also includes the stipends that go to the coaches, and that's about $4,500, and I do, that is the only amount that's actually budgeted for. The other costs are, of course, from that grant amount, and then donations that come from the PTO or Rocky Coast Print Works, and I know that Bill has been able to help us with some extra costs that have come up. And, you know, we, we anticipate that the program will still continue to grow in popularity. We're running the Reach Camp, and we are full, I do think we have 30 students signed up for all four weeks of Reach Camp, so usually if they come to that, they want to continue on when they come in for the next school year. And just having the interest, you know, we want to make sure that we're still able to provide a quality program, you know, I think all these, all their performances and what they've said tonight kind of speaks for itself, we don't want to lose that ability to be able to give students like this that space to excel, and also, you know, have that opportunity to explore engineering and, you know, continue on in the future if it's something that they're interested in. So, just to wrap it up, we wanted to kind of put that out there, that we're hoping to still be able to provide this type of quality program in the future. Thanks.
Hey, thank you.
Does, yeah, I think we have some questions.
Yeah, questions, yeah, please.
No, just a, a great, I'm so impressed, and congratulations, and thank you, John, for all that you have done for the program. It's, yeah, it sounds like, it's just, I can't believe it's 94 students, that's really impressive.
Yeah, you should come after school someday, it's quite, it's amazingly focused, but quite intense, 94 students, they're very on task, but there's a lot of energy there.
Any other questions? Just an observation, Jay.
Maybe she used to be one of them, she was there, four years ago, retired from middle school robotics, but...
The notebook that you provided that was completed was amazing, yeah.
It is, I think I, and this is something that, this is what they do, you want to ask me?
Yeah, apparently we have four students that go to MIT, came from this program.
Four students that graduated from this robotics program, and some of them are working out, are working out, kind of, in the MIT, who are in our school as well.
That's the best, yeah, the notebook's impressive, and this is something they do for fun, we have kids from every walk-alive athletes, you know, the coders, the builders, the, every type of thing, you get kids coming after, like, they coach basketball, after, they're sitting in the locker room, they're working on their, their engineering notebooks before basketball games, to make sure they wrote down what they just changed on their robot. It's, it is a, it's an interesting thing that we just have, you know, the three of us have watched, just, we couldn't stop it if we wanted to. The kids are there every single day now, even now the season's ended, our rooms, they're always down there, they know what the new challenge is for next year, and they know we have the pieces to start building the, the new fields, but they, they want to see it, but we've been trying to let, make them take a break, because we need one. But, yeah, it's been, it's been, they've done a tremendous job, so, yeah.
Thank you all very much for coming in and sharing, and I appreciate it, and congratulations, and good luck next year in the high school.
All right, guys, on this one.
All right, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Surprise, no report tonight, Matt.
Oh. You still finishing?
That is a, that is a surprise. A, a report from the business administrator. Amy.
Do you have a report?
Yes, do it.
You can come up and give your report if you're ready. Thank you very much.
Good evening, in your packet you will find the FY25 budget report as of May 10th. Our general fund balance currently is estimated at $923,832, so we're in great shape. My goal is to pay as many of our retirement stipends and other retirement bonuses that come with collective bargaining agreements in this fiscal year, while still maintaining that $500,000 that will go back to the taxpayers that we talked about during budget time. So, we're in great shape, and, any questions anybody has on the financial statement?
Go ahead, Brian.
So I assume, just for the, for the others that are, or might not understand this, that final, that $923 you gave us, obviously, coming out of that, you had mentioned what we're gonna give back to the taxpayers, but also includes the two ballot items we had in March, would be coming out of that as well, so we got, we're fine there too.
Pretty good place, yes. All right, thanks.
Thank you for your question. We will move sadly to our school report for May, this will be our last report, so make it be good.
Okay, ooh, that's a lot of pressure to put on me, but I'll try my best. So I left you with a cliffhanger the last time we spoke, it was Mental Health Week, and we had our Wellness Friday coming up, and there was 20-plus activities that we had in the second half of the day, we had pickleball, yoga, crocheting, everybody was trying new things, and it was a lot of participation from all the students, so that was great. Then transitioning to upcoming events, we have prom, the 23rd, at the Red Barn, starting at 7:00. And then Coffee House, the last one of the year, it's outside on the 30th at 6:00, so it's a little bit of change of scenery. And then June 3rd, a lot of things start, so June 3rd is the career signing day, so like, athletes have these signing days, it's for anybody joining the workforce right after high school, one apprenticeship. And then the science showcase is also that day, at 6 o'clock, and that's also when Senior Week starts, so, very exciting. We have a Senior Week carnival, starting on Monday, which is gonna be fun, there's a bouncy house ops, of course, bull riding, cotton candy, fried dough, all the good stuff. Yeah, 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 it's gonna be fun.
Cheers, we'd be welcome.
Tuesday is the Senior Cruise, the Thomas Layton Cruise out of Portsmouth, and then Wednesday is the Canterbury Lake trip, that's why I'm not gonna be here, sadly. And then since it's my last meeting, I just really wanted to make sure you guys know how much I appreciate you providing this opportunity for students. You've been doing it for so long, and not all the other school boards have extended that, and that's just something I appreciate, and the student body notices, that you always put student needs first, and I, I harp on it so much because I just, everyone notices that, and I want you guys to know that as well, that we see that, and everything you guys do, every policy you pass, it's all with that in mind, and I really appreciate you guys doing that. So thank you, guys. And I'm working on providing a packet for the next school board rep, like, things that they should know, because I think it would be really helpful, coming into this, to have a little background, so if you guys have things that you wanted, or you think a school board rep should know, you can send me an email, I'll talk to me after, and I'll write that down, and I'll put that for the next kid to take on, so yes, that's all I got.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
There is, but we're marked down in the discussion area, so I'll, I'll do it then.
And my microphone was on for none of that, so I apologize. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, what you have in front of you is our summer computer order, and for the new board members, what we've started doing last year was, for student devices, we're replacing them in first, fifth, and ninth. Before, we were doing like, a whole building at once, and it was a lot of devices to get in, set up, and out the door, so we tried to make it a smaller amount, and that way a kid gets a device when they're entering into one of our buildings, they keep it for the four years. We've been doing four-year leases with a dollar buyout at the end. This year, we also had, staff devices were due up, so that's what this lease covers. The rate came in better than I had anticipated, and so we threw in some servers that we've needed to replace, that we've been kicking down the road a little bit, they said I can't buy an extended warranty on them anymore. So, so that's what I have on the list here, any questions?
Need a motion?
Oh, yes, and, yeah, I'm just looking for a motion from the board to approve the proposal from Dell Financial, and I wrote it out at the bottom of the memo, someone wants to read it off.
Denise.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Dell Financial Services for the total amount financed of $765,290.23, with four annual payments of $211,763.46.
I'm gonna make a slight change to that, because we got a different, that's a older document.
Oh.
So, the, the total amount is correct, but the annual payment is, went down to 205,000, eight, 205, yeah, 205,840.11 cents.
I'll amend my motion to reflect that annual payment adjustment.
Karen, did you get that number? Okay.
Sorry, it came in late on Friday, but it was a good change, so.
Yes, very good. That's a motion from Denise, can I have a second, from Heather? Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Seven in favor, and the student rep in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna say, am I still up, or?
Yes, the copier lease is district-wide.
Yeah, I can certainly, so, same thing with copiers, they're big and expensive, so we lease those, we typically do a five-year lease, so our five-year lease is ending in a couple months, so we've been using Canon, and they've worked out really well for us. I met with the principals, talked to our front office staff, no one had any real complaints, everything seems to be going really well, they're very responsive to our issues, and so we got a quote from them to continue working with them, they went through our usage data for the last five years, and made a recommendation on the different devices and the sizes, I then made some slight changes, because we had the pandemic in there, and we built a new school, so things did change a little bit, and so this is, this is what they've come up with, and so the, the way this works is the lease covers the, the cost of the copiers, and then we pay a cost per print, or cost per click, for any time something comes out. That went up slightly, I think it went up .0001 since five years ago, which isn't too too bad, so, yeah.
But we still have a savings, so even after having the clicks go up, our current monthly expense is $10,218, the new proposed monthly expense will be $9,341, so we're gonna save $877 a month, or an annual estimated savings of $10,524. So we're looking for a motion to enter into another five-year lease.
Denise.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into a five-year lease with Canon Solutions of America for copiers and printers.
Can I have a second, Heather? Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Seven in favor, student rep in favor. All right, thank you very much. Before we get to your discussion, can we do the policy, it should be very quick, yes, Denise?
Yes, so you see that we have a number of policies that are, well, one policy, which is a new policy that is replacing a number of other policies, and this comes out of a change in the law, so this is all based on the requirements, Amy has gone through it, we did not make any change whatsoever to it in the policy committee, as it is very prescribed, and they do, that policy DAF replaces a number of other policies, and that is all that we have, correct? It's just that, I believe.
Do you want to make that motion?
Sure, unless anybody, does anybody have any questions about it at all? Okay, all right, so I will make a motion, let's see if I can read this all out here. Let's see if I can read this all out here. Make a motion for first read and deletion. So DAF Administration of Federal Grant Funds. And then the others, yes. And that is for first read. And then for deletion, DKC Expect Reimbursement District and Federal Funds. Oh, no, sorry. Let me read it the way it's written here. All right. Policies for first read and deletion, DAF Administration of Federal Grant Funds, DKC Expense Reimbursement District and Federal Funds for, I don't think that's right. Because that one is, isn't that one for, that one was for deletion also, right? DK? I think it's just written wrong on the agenda. So isn't it just DAF that's for first read? And then DKC, DB, DBI, DBJ, and DH are all for deletion? Am I right about that?
So D, DA, D1, D2, D3, D4, they all roll up into the new DAF.
Right. Oh, that's an one, not an I.
And then the DKC was, we're changing it.
Oh. So that is not for deletion?
That's not for deletion.
Okay. I do have that.
So Denise, if it's okay with you, I'd like to withdraw your motion and then restate a new motion?
Yes. Please do that, because I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All right. I'm a little bit confused about it, but.
Denise, you want to say?
Yeah, because I just thought there was only one.
And those are deletions.
Amy, do you want to state the motion?
Okay.
Or whatever's easier for you?
Denise, would you like Amy to do the motion?
Sure, you can state it. I'm just, I just thought there was just one policy. That's why I'm actually a little bit confused. I thought one policy was replacing all the others, so now.
It was. And so the listing of all the ones that are going to be deleted is D.
Yeah, but why is there DKC? That's a separate policy.
Right, it's for first read. They're two separate.
Yeah, that's what, I thought there was only one policy for first read, and the others were all deleted. In other words, I thought DKC was also being deleted.
No.
Okay, so that's my mistake.
That's why I'm amending that one.
All right. So yeah, you can go ahead and state it. I gotta go look at.
So it's for DAF for a first read, and the deletion of DA, D1, D2, D3, D4, and D5, oh, ND, sorry.
Oh, here it is. Okay.
Can we have a second on that motion?
First, you need it first, because all Amy was doing is reading it from the record.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry. I finally found DK, DKC, because I really hadn't, I was like, where's DKC? So I did find it. So yes, I didn't realize that that was part, I thought that was a separate, I thought that was separate. So, all right.
Do you want to make a motion as stated by Amy?
I just, I don't know that, did we actually look at this in policy committee, this DKC?
We did. I can talk about it if you'd like.
Okay. Just because I knew about, I was confused by the whole thing. Because I really did think DAF and then all the others were being replaced. So I, DKC is Expense Reimbursement District and Federal Funds. And that is part of what's replacing DB, DBI, DBG, and DH? Am I correct about that?
DKC sits totally separate on its own. I think it's in the packet, you know, in order incorrectly.
That's what I'm confused about. I was like, I don't think that was what was replacing. All right. So I'm going to set aside DKC completely. I'm setting it aside because that, I didn't think that that had anything to do with the others. It's a separate policy. So I'm going to make a motion for first read for DAF. And for deletion, DB, Annual District Budget, DBI, Budget Implementation. No? It's still not right?
This is off the packet.
This is, so this is wrong.
And don't hear your notes from the meeting, but when you have the packet.
Well, all right. You know what? Maybe we should just do this next time. I don't know.
That's totally fine.
I feel, I'm sorry, but it's like, I, this is from my, this is from policy committee. And this is what I have. And this is what we reviewed in policy.
Sure.
So this is not what I had in policy.
Then let's just wait till the next meeting?
So I think we're just gonna, just wait for the next meeting.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Sorry. But this is totally different than this. Yes.
Okay. And the next item for discussion is the consideration of the updated facility fee schedule. Yes.
Okay, facility fee schedule, if, for the new people on the board, if, I know we've been discussing this for a while, but we've been discussing it a long time before either one of you came on board. But this is kind of a background as to how we got to where we are today. Just to share kind of the historical background here. But up until about five years ago, 2019, the district actually required all users to pay facility fees in order to use our facilities, whether it be a field, a classroom, a gym, a multipurpose room, anything along those lines. And they were basically based upon whether the organization was a for-profit or a nonprofit group. At that particular time, due to the climate within the district with all these groups, we basically adopted additional category of user, which is called nonprofit groups supporting children of the district. That's what we now consider to be Group 5. This additional category of, of the nonprofit groups supporting children of the district, were not charged fees to use the facilities, even though, except for fees such as lighting for the field turf field, custodial fees, those are direct costs to us, so we would pass them along to those organizations. We always assess that regardless. So the effect of this policy change has been evident in the maintenance needs of our facilities. Looking back, hindsight always being 2020, not charging people to use our facilities was probably a mistake on our part, but it's fit the need at the time. We realized it's a mistake and we're trying to rectify it. So basically, our high school turf field should have an approximate 10- to 12-year lifespan. It looks like it is probably not going to make that full term. Reason being is we've just used it a lot, and that's what it's designed for. We use it when there's still snow on the ground, because there's no snow on a turf. Usually, the snow melts faster in a turf field. It can drain, you can use it in rain, you can use it in any weather. We can get on it earlier in the spring, we can get on it later in the fall. So it's used a lot. Obviously, we just, you know, within the last year, year and a half, we got our second field turf field. So it can take a little bit of the use off it, but the problem is, we don't have lights there, so we have limited use for that field. And also has limited stands as well. So the high school and middle school gym floors are requiring substantially more maintenance in the summer for top layer work. Both gym floors, once fully refinished, should have about a 10-year lifespan. Cycle obviously is more frequent at the high school, and the reason being is that's used more than the middle school. Especially the old, older middle school that we had, it was not used much at all. The new middle school, used it much more. So our gym, since you're three years old, it's actually about two years old, because it was two years ago in February, we opened the, we opened the school. So, but after two years, it's already showing signs of needing refinishing out of a 10-year cycle. So that's due to excessive use. It's due to probably the wrong footwear being used out there is probably a big part of it. People are dragging in dirt, things like that, usually because those people, they're generally not monitored when they're in the building, where gym teachers are always cognizant and very strict on what you can use for sneakers when you're in the gym. So we looked at the usage. I give credit to Heather for this, because she dove real deep into the numbers, and she can do a spreadsheet much better than me, and I think I'm pretty good at spreadsheets. So, but although the school uses these facilities the most, that Group 5 that we talked about actually has a good amount of usage. This is the average amount of use for the last two years for each one of these locations, the Massway Gym, the Maharama Gym, Middle and High School Gym, the turf fields. And you'll see the total hours of use. It's actually a pretty good amount. So proposed fee changes. What are we looking to do to change? We actually, what we did was we, we took a lot of surrounding talent, and I'll have that on the next slide. We looked at them and looked at how they price out their fields. We wanted to be competitive. We didn't want to be the highest, didn't want to be the lowest, but wanted to be competitive. And we wanted to be able to at least recoup some of the costs of the maintenance of these, of these places. So there are two categories of fees for the board's consideration that we're looking to put forward. We're looking to update the fee schedule to reflect market rates for field and gymnasium usage, and reinstituting fees for all facility users. So anybody that uses our facilities will be charged. Okay? So what we did, as a finance committee, we analyzed peer group, determined the market rate for outside groups using our facilities. You'll see the peer group on the right here. Boe, Dover, Exeter, Hanover, Portsmouth, St. Thomas, Sauhegan, UNH. We're looking at schools of similar size, similar fields, and obviously within some proximity. Rates and rental minimums were adjusted for middle schools and high school gymnasiums and fields. Some have minimums, some don't. Rates were chosen within the middle of the peer range, like I said before. Not the highest, not the lowest, but rate in the middle. So here's what we're looking to do for, for proposed fee changes, for certain, for that Group 5 that we talked about. The finance committee is proposing a separate rate for nonprofit organizations supporting youth sports. These rates are set by facility and assessed per season and per sport. Rates are based on historic usage, program enrollment, and operating and maintenance costs. You'll see the fee schedule we have here. We're going, we're going to utilize a per-season, per-sport fee. What that means, as an example, is if you are playing lacrosse, okay, kids in lacrosse, they will have one charge to use the fee, use the field. And the amount of hours they, but we've actually averaged the hours over the last few years. They're not going to get any more hours, not going to get any less hours, but they get that same amount, and they pay, if they're using the middle school turf, it's $1,500 per season, per sport. Same thing with the high school turf. And when we looked at these, we were trying to figure in maintenance costs. So that's why it's different for each one. The gyms, each one of the gyms is $500 per season for sport. So you could have basketball season. Boys' basketball would be $500 per season, per sport. Same thing with the Maharama Gym. Middle school and high school gym, each $1,000 each. One of the reasons for this is, we took a lot, we put a lot of consideration, the suggestions made, what other schools are doing, but also, we didn't want to make this labor-intensive. We didn't want people counting hours on either side of the table. It just becomes cumbersome. It's, it's just a waste of good time of our employees to have to be able to keep track of exactly how many hours they, they're used. So we made it fair. We brought in the two organizations that use the most time, which, outside of the district, Maxxon Velocity and ORYA. We sat down with both of them, okay? Went over all these changes, what would include, what you would get for that fee schedule, and we all agreed on where we landed. Both of them thought they were very fair. Both of them thought it was, it was doable. It wasn't breaking the bank for anybody. And I, they thought it was, it was a fair, a fair place to land for, for the use that they have. Actually, it was very amicable, amicable meeting. It wasn't, it wasn't adversarial at all. It actually worked out very well, considering the history we've seen here. So youth board pricing is contingent upon, and these are the guidelines that we're looking to, to go by for the next year. Now, these are, what I, I want to stress the word guidelines, because we not sure where it's all going to fall over the next year. So we want to feel this out and see how it's going to go. And we, every year, this has to come in front of the board by policy anyway. So in a year from now, the finance committee will look at it again and say, all right, we're going to tweak it here, we're going to tweak it there. We may adjust the numbers a little bit, depending on usage. But we, we fully understand that this will probably change a year from now. You know, how much, I can't, I can't say. So first of all, the organization has to be in good standing with, within the district. That's pretty standard across the board. Teams are comprised of at least 80% of our, Oyster River and Barrington residents. And teams are comprised of U-19 and younger age groups. Okay? That's why the focus is on youth groups. So that's really our, it's not a strict guideline, but it's a guideline that we're going to go, we're going to kind of massage it as we, as we go and see how it, how it works. So, in summary, our district facility rates are in line with peer groups. We are looking for the board to reinstitute fees for all groups, for facilities usage. Fees for youth sports have been considered separately and assessed per season, per sport. Anybody that goes above and beyond their usage, or has a separate, anything that is outside the guidelines, will be charged hourly for these, for these fields. So they don't, they don't get carte blanche, they don't get a, you know, full use of the facility, facilities for that fee they're paying. It's within the average hours they've been, already been using. We're still going to have the same process of ORYA, Maxxon Velocity coming in with the athletic director and scheduling fields, just like they do now. That's worked well for the last few years. We're going to continue to do that. Both organizations thought it worked well, too, as well as the athletic director. So we feel if we continue doing that, I think we're going to be in a good place. Now, I also want to keep in mind that these fees that we collect are not going to completely pay for replacements of these fields. So I think we have to keep that in mind. It's actually a very, very small amount. But because they're using it, we really feel a responsibility as a board and as a district to at least charge them a certain amount to utilize that field. It's, and these fees that come in will go into the account that we established at the, at the March ballot. Okay? So that'll go directly into that facilities account, which will go towards the, the replacement of these fields. So, because the issue is, we will have to replace the high school field in a few years, but we got to start building up funds to do the middle school in eight, nine years, probably down the road. So we need to have a rolling account going to do that, otherwise, we're going to be another hole, you know, 10 years, almost 10 years from now. So that's kind of the goal. That's what we're doing, what we're doing. I will accept any questions that anybody may have. If you feel comfortable tonight, you can make a decision. If you want to push it off to the next meeting, that's fine, too. It's completely up to you. But I will tell you that the finance committee, Gianna, Heather, and myself, Amy, did a great job collecting a ton of information for us. Jim was great, too, in getting people to the table that we needed to speak to, as well as learning some other parts of the process. So there's many, many hours that has gone into this, going back and forth. But the good part is, we got everyone together at the table. Everybody is happy. Right now, we're in a good place. So, and that took some work. Question, go ahead.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So, so will we still charge the lights and janitorial fees separate, those direct costs are still separate?
Regardless, that gets charged, no matter what.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense.
Because like I said, that is a direct cost to us. We, no reason why I should pay that. We're going to charge them for that.
Okay. Perfect. That makes sense. And then my other cost is, I noticed in some of the kind of older documentation related to the facility fees, we had information in there about working with the organization if there are damages or vandalism or that kind of stuff. So.
That's still, that's still the same.
That all still applies.
If they do damage, they get billed for it.
Okay.
Brian, if I could just add, part of the conversation we had, Kelly, was establishing a memorandum of understanding with both of these groups, and damage would be part of that memorandum.
Okay.
That was one requirement when we talked to these groups, that we are going to do a memorandum, a memorandum of, MOU. So everybody's on the same page. There's no questions about who's doing what, and there's somebody behind me.
I just wanted to add that this is our, so this is the, how we proceed going forward. The policy does speak to any damages, insurance that you have to have. That is a more detailed document on what happens if you do damage to a building. This is just the case.
And organizations have to acknowledge and sign that they acknowledge that policy annually when they renew their accounts through the scheduling system.
They also have to prove their nonprofit status each year as well.
Yes.
So that is important. We do require that.
Perfect. And I just really appreciate all of the time and effort and the peer group that you looked at. You guys looked at a huge number of different, a variety of locations, not just, you know, our tiny little seacoast area. I mean, it was, it was much bigger and broader than that.
Amy did a great job of collecting the information for us, and so we could not spend the time collecting, but spend the time analyzing.
Really looking at it.
And I will give credit to Heather for the in-depth analysis of hours used per organization, per field. She was pulling everything up on the spreadsheet, and it's actually amazing. But it really did help when we were making the decision and seeing, you know, one particular group uses more outside fields, where one other particular group uses a lot of inside facilities. And we had, kind of had to measure that out to have a level of fairness between the two. So, and the important part was the MOU that we were doing with them. So I don't think we've had that before, so now we have that done. Any other questions?
Go ahead, Heather.
So, that's not a question, but after this went out in the packet.
So, it's not a question, but after this went out in the packets, we were talking, and on the front page where it says application fee, we are going to make a change to that to a cancellation no-show fee. So we can't vote on this as it is in the packet because we're still, there, there's one thing we're tweaking based on the meeting we had on Monday.
You can approve it with that change. Yeah. That was the only thing that every, I believe there was a $25 fee every time you booked something. We felt it was more wise to make it a fee if they canceled or no-showed, because what you're doing in that case is someone else could have used the facility at that point. And so you caused a hardship to somebody else, so we take that fee at kind of a, you know, don't do it again type fee, so.
Any other questions? Let's wait until the next meeting to make that change, and we'll vote on it then. But I do want to reiterate what Kelly said. The three of you, and Amy and Dr. Morris, I know you guys have met since our last regular meeting multiple times and put in a really, a lot of good work on this, and I really appreciate it. So thank you all very much, and Amy, thank you very much. School board committee updates. One at a time, please. Okay. Seeing none, are there any public comments? There is one public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ooh, she's taking her badge off.
I'm taking my badge off. Suzanne Philpon from Durham. I just want to acknowledge Maeve as our Seacoast Student of the Week next week, so congratulations, Maeve. Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry, I have a question. What is the Student of the Week?
The Seacoast Student of the Week is a student in the seacoast area that is nominated by the people within the district, and they, and I'm going to defer to the principal of the high school to come up and support me in this, but I, but I believe that they're voted on. No?
They changed it.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. So it's brand new this year. They started it probably about two months ago. And at first, the first two to three weeks, they had, any high school could nominate a student in their high school. It doesn't have to be a senior, it can be a student in the high school. And they were having people vote on them. The principals, the feedback was to the newspaper, we don't want to vote. Like, all of these kids, we're nominating them because they're awesome and great kids doing wonderful things in our schools. So they took the voting away, and it really is just to bring kids forward who are doing these amazing things. And so I put it out there to staff. So staff has been nominating students. I collect information from different people that the kids work with, and then we put together a little write-up about them and get their picture, and they're in the paper for the next week.
Rebecca, does that mean, does that mean that every student that's nominated by the various Seacoast schools is the Student of the Week collectively?
Correct, for their school.
Nice. Much better.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Our closing actions, our future meeting dates will be the first Wednesday in June, and instead of the third Wednesday in June, it will be the third Thursday in June. That meeting has been moved to the 20th. But both meetings will be here at the recital hall.
Matt, can I just add?
Please.
So the first meeting in June, Dr. Shapps will be here. This is for the community, who as the board knows this, to present his transition plan coming into the district. So I think that would be of high interest. If you spread that news, if you can get better viewership. I think it's a great opportunity for Dr. Shapps to introduce himself to the broader community through his presentation.
Okay. Excellent. All right.[1768.04]